I call our meeting back in order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Even before we get started, the public hearing that was scheduled for the common victual or an all alcohol license for the Hillview Country Club, scheduled for eight fifteen, has been canceled. Does anyone here that came for that? That's will be rescheduled for next Monday night. Mike, do you have a time?
No, actually, that was the seven.
So, the Hillview is next Monday night at eight o'clock PM.
Ava.
And Thompson Club will be March seventh. We don't have an exact time yet.
I hadn't got that figured out. Okay, and the second hearing is a public hearing on seasonal alcohol and alteration of premises, Thompson Club, Pro Shop, and that's been rescheduled for the seventh. The exact time will be published later. Anyone here for any of those? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to further clarify, the Thompson Club, that's also going to be, it's not going to be just for the alteration of premises, but it's actually going to be for a new license request?
Yes, it is a new license request.
Yeah, that's not what it was.
So, there's two different licenses?
Right, two different licenses.
That's correct. So, we received the original application from the Thompson Club as an alteration of premises license for the existing license that they have at the Golf, the Pro Shop, the clubhouse. And it will not be an alteration of that license, but rather a request for a second license at that, in that area, for the new restaurant club operation, which I believe is on the second floor, if I'm not mistaken, of the new building. So, we need to re-advertise it to reflect that, based on the discussions we've had with the prospective licensee, for March seventh.
Do they need this, the other license then?
They would. Our understanding is their intention is to keep one license for the Pro Shop, and then a second license, which would not be contiguous to the first license for this restaurant, club restaurant.
Okay. Okay, we have a proclamation here for North Reading Dollars for Scholars. I think we have a few guests here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the week of March sixth through tenth, two thousand and sixteen, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and to read proclamation.
Second.
On the purposes of discussion, Mr. Chairman, shall I read the proclamation first before we vote on it, then we can have some input?
I'm wondering if there's anybody here that, why don't you read the proclamation, and we'll ask for comments.
All right. Take a seat if you like it. All right, we'll vote on it. Whereas the Citizen Scholarship Foundation is a group of hard-working, dedicated individuals, and whereas the Citizen Scholarship Foundation members have devoted both time and talent to the difficult task of seeking scholarship funds for deserving students, and whereas Citizen Scholarship Foundation is planning its annual phone-a-thon for the week of March sixth through tenth, two thousand and sixteen, where high school students will contact all North Reading homes by telephone, seeking pledges to the Citizen Scholarship Foundation Fund. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of North Reading, do hereby proclaim the week of March sixth through tenth, two thousand and sixteen, as Citizen Scholarship Foundation Dollars for Scholars Week, and urge all citizens to open their hearts and their persons to the benefit of North Reading students who want to continue their education, under the signature of Robert Marsey, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. So, somebody's here.
Representative from CSA, would you like to say a few words?
I appreciate it.
I mean, you do.
Yeah, they come give us a pitch, so they can, give us a pitch, so they can.
Yeah.
Just say your name in two seconds. You have to go to, you have to go to.
All right.
We can think.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yes, I'm going to use your name. I'm Kathy Achivati, I'm the new president. I've taken over for Tony, and I would appreciate that you vote for the proclamation and give us the time next week. And when you do, get your letters in the mail, let's send some checks back, and hopefully we'll have a successful year. And thank you, Fiona, for doing all the hard work for it. Thank you.
Congratulations for taking over.
Yes.
Tony wishes he could be here.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, we have another proclamation.
Bob, do you want to do a photo with the students?
Sure, absolutely. Let me sign the proclamation.
How would you like us to arrange?
Um.
All standing, or some sitting and standing?
Some sitting and standing.
I'll sit.
The boys will be standing. Three, three members can sit like that, and two members can.
I'm going to go again.
You're going to sit in the middle, Bob.
Sit there. See, why don't you hold that with somebody?
Okay, so, Bob.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to hold proclamation.
Okay.
Turn around, turn around, and shake hands with John.
Okay, with John.
You're going to look at me. Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, yeah, huh?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We're waiting for your call.
Good luck.
When Tony used to come, he used to bring us a lot of desserts and stuff. That's okay. I'm just kidding, by the way. Just kidding. Sure. Thank you.
Oh, really? Is this supposed to be?
No, the middle one should be.
Yeah. Ah, good evening.
I'm guessing it's the ones to you.
No, unless it's not, I might get my eye back.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Kate.
Really?
Get your breath.
You're going to keep those, really?
Kate gets her job back.
Okay.
No matter how late I show up.
So, Kate, we're, the next motion is on a proclamation for a North Reading night out.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to be North Reading night off, and to read the proclamation.
Second.
I got my Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Is there anyone here from Community Impact Team? I don't see anybody, so, do you want to read the proclamation, or would you like me to?
Sure. Oh, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
North Reading Community Impact Team proclamation, whereas the North Reading Community Impact Team works to identify factors that have a negative impact on the quality of life for all community members, from our young children to our senior citizens, and to implement solutions that solve the underlying problems. Whereas the North Reading Community Impact Team is a partnership between the North Reading Police Department, Youth Services, Elder Services, School Department, Parks and Recreation, Fire Department, and the Board of Selectmen. Whereas North Reading is a busy, thriving town, but Community Impact Team surveys show that time management and stress are a key factor impacting North Reading families. Whereas studies show that children and teens in families who eat dinner together frequently have lower incidence of drug and alcohol use, and it is the goal of the North Reading Community Impact Team to support healthy relationships and strong communications within families. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of North Reading, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to be North Reading Night Off. We urge all town departments, committees, community organizations, sports leagues, and businesses with regularly scheduled events for students and families to suspend all activities beginning at 5:00 PM on March fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, so that all North Reading families, young and old, can unplug and slow down to spend important time together, enjoying a meal, conversation, and unpressured family time. Robert J. Marsey, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, proclaim this twenty-second day of February two thousand and sixteen.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Why don't we do the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, just as a comment on that, the town administrator could probably say better than I, as far as what the outreach is going to be in relation to North Reading Night Off.
Sure, so, we've alerted departments, and those departments and staff boards and committees, to advise them that this was going to be requested of the board, so that they would not plan meetings on that particular evening. And so, we would encourage all of our municipal and community groups to avoid scheduling events on that particular evening, in order to see that this stays recognized.
Thank you. We've got five minutes, so we want to do the minutes?
Seventy resolution?
What?
Chapter seventy resolution?
Uh.
I don't know if that's a five-minute thing? Is that, I mean, is that something we're just going to read? Mike, the chapter seventy resolution, is that something we're just going to be reading?
Well, we're in a court of the resolution, so I think we need a discussion.
Okay.
So, let's do the minutes. The minutes of January twenty-fifth, regular and executive session. Mr. Minister Pelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We have an executive session for that evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And lastly, we have the regular session of February sixteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Okay. We still have time. Legal bills for December. Mr. Gilberto.
Do we vote on this?
All of them, favor?
Sorry. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Getting ahead of myself. Trying to cram in everything before.
It's, it's missing off the page.
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that Ms. Herbert is here, and the finance director is here as well. I don't know if perhaps we could consider taking up the snow and ice item as well, since I believe they're both here for that item.
Okay, that's true. We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to declare a snow and ice emergency in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one D, for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Discussion, Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, just information for the public, the information that's been provided to the board is that our expenditures through the February fifteenth snow event, but potentially not including some contracted services, was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. As the board knows, our annual operating budget for snow and ice removal is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then, in the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, revenue and expenditure plan, we carry an allowance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover any overage beyond that appropriation. So, we have exceeded the appropriation, but we're within the allowance that we carry in the FY seventeen budget.
And just to be clear, the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that you mentioned, if I have that number right?
Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, yes.
Two fifty-nine is the total spent for the season, not just this last storm?
That's correct. That's the total spent for the, for the season.
I just, well, if people may, may not know.
The other thing that I would note is that we were last scheduled to meet on February eighth, and if you look prior to the February eighth storm, our expenditures were within the appropriation. That storm, that particular day, put us over, and subsequent storms have added to that number.
Okay, so, Mr. Prisco.
All right, just, just a question. And the report that you gave was great, thank you, because I don't remember seeing this before, so it was very helpful. But, I, when I do the calculation, it comes out to three hundred and, no, three thousand three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a mile. Is that roughly where we typically are? I mean, we have twenty-five inches of snow, we have a few ice events, so I'm just curious if that, it's three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars a mile. And, and don't get me wrong when I ask this question, they do an unbelievable job in this town, better than any town around. So, I'm not questioning their ability, I'm just curious, I mean, are we on the higher end of other communities, or are we right in the ballpark? Because it seems like a high number.
Generally, at this time of year, I've circulated a survey to other communities to try to get an understanding of how much they've expended, and how many lane miles they have in their communities. I've not done that at this point in time, just because of other, other things that have come up, but it should be something I should be able to identify this week, to be able to give the board some information as a comparison. But, I mean, I will say, we've, we've had a number of small accumulation, long-duration storms, which have been more costly. I don't think that there's any denying that fact. We had a storm on February eighth, where I think we ended up with four inches of snow, and it snowed for fourteen hours. Very costly to remove the snow at that point, for that type of a storm. But, we can give the board an analysis to look at.
I'm curious.
And we could probably provide that same information for last year as a benchmark.
That would be helpful.
Mr. Yule.
Yeah, it's, Mike, that's a good way of looking at it. I just want to make sure I understood the, the number. Did you say three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Three thousand.
Oh, three thousand.
Three thousand three hundred and twenty-five.
Three hundred.
Vermont.
Good. I'm glad I can get that correct.
So, we roughly have eighty miles of road, and the cost is two sixty. You know, simple math, it's.
Right.
Thirty-three hundred dollars a mile. And now, again, I'm not sure if that's good or bad. We may find out where.
But, it's a good way of looking at it, I have to say.
There are supplies that have been purchased that are still available, so it's in that number. I don't know how much of an impact that would have on it, but.
Okay.
Any other comment on the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? I guess that gets us to Reading Municipal Light.
Thank you.
I'll open the, thank you. We have a representative here from Reading Light. I'll open the public hearing first. In accordance with Chapter one sixty-six, Section twenty-two of the Mass, Massachusetts General Law, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen at North Reading Town Hall Room fourteen, two thirty-five North Street, on Monday, February twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, at eight oh five PM, on the joint petition of Reading Municipal Light Department and Horizon New England, Inc., with three new poles to be located on Carpenter Drive, as described on our MLD Plan Number one nine four six, dated eleven eighteen, two thousand and five.
Mr. Chairman, as the representative from RMLD approaches the microphone, just as background, I think the board's well, well aware of the situation with regard to Carpenter Drive. So, this is land that the board received, authorized at the town meeting, from in October, for the construction of a public way. The way has been constructed, and I believe it was in binder, the last time I looked at it, but it may have a final quote on it as well, and there's a pole installation that's associated with it. One thing, and I noted this in the minutes, and I'm saying this more for the record than anything else, so I asked Fiona if you could record it, but we conveyed the property to be used as a public way, with certain restrictions on it. Excuse me, we conveyed it to be used as an unaccepted way, with certain restrictions on it, in terms of responsibilities that the town would maintain. And this hearing is being held by the selectmen, because there really is no other body to hold the hearing for the installation of the poles. But, I wanted to be clear for the record, by virtue of having the hearing, the town is not giving up its position that the maintenance of this way is the responsibility of the abiding property owners. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vaughn.
Welcome.
Welcome. Vaughn Bryan, Reading Municipal Light Department, Engineering Project Manager. Here, as requested, to petition three new poles on Carpenter Drive. Pole one, approximately one hundred and thirty-five street feet from the Chestnut Street Center Line. Pole two, approximately two hundred and sixty-two feet from the Chestnut Street Center Line. And pole three, approximately three hundred and eighty feet from Chestnut Street Center Line. These three poles will be to serve the house at the end of this new street, Carpenter Drive, and any potential other development extended beyond that.
With respect to the pole that's on Chestnut Street?
Yep.
How far away is it on either side of, you know, what's the closest pole on either side of Chestnut?
The closest pole on either side is approximately about a hundred and fifty feet. Going down Chestnut Street.
It's not like, as a result of having to put a pole there, there's a pole ten feet away or something.
There's a, there's a existing pole on Chestnut Street, that we're going to extend the pole line off of that pole, going down Carpenter Drive. So, that will be the, the right, the getaway pole, to feed anything off of Carpenter Drive, anything beyond that.
I was just curious, how far away is it? How far away is the nearest pole on either side of the pole that's going to be on Chestnut Street, right at the corner of Carpenter Drive?
There's an existing pole right there.
Oh, there is a pole?
There is a pole. Yeah, we're not installing a pole right there. All these, these three poles are going to be on Carpenter Drive. That first pole is going to be a hundred and twenty feet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got it. I got it. Okay, there's three. I was, I looked, and I said, one, two, three, and I didn't go any further.
If you look at this map.
Yeah, no, I got it. I got it, it's on the table. Thank you, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? What's the schedule?
Schedule would probably be like the spring. Hopefully, when the thaw, everything starts out a little bit. We tend to set a bunch of poles in the fall, while the ground is a little bit soft, and as it freezes up, and we'll do more transfers, and then hopefully by the spring, we'll start setting poles again, unless it's on emergency basis.
Mr. Yule.
Yeah, I don't know if I should be asking you this question, or just ourselves. It's a new street.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering why, on a new street, we're not doing the connection underground?
It, it goes back to when Mrs. Preney was trying to get a grant for senior housing.
Right.
And that block of town-owned land, which is sort of at the end of the, the street there, in, in the process of the board granting her a portion of that land as part of the grant, she had to show a right-of-way. And I think, as a result of that, there was somebody that was interested in, you know, if you had a right-of-way, you had then a buildable lot. And my understanding is, he went ahead and, you know, constructed the, the right-of-way, and actually paved it. Am I correct when I say it's paved?
It was in binder, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's how we got to that. So, in the end, the town now has access to that property from Chestnut Street, which it didn't have directly before.
I don't think that was the question, though. I.
Why is that being buried? Why is it being buried?
Why are the wires being buried? Well, it's a brand-new street.
Oh, why isn't it being buried? I missed that. I apologize. That I don't, I can't answer that.
Without having the special permit, where subdivision plan in front of me has reviewed and approved by the Community Planning Commission, I suspect that this particular development, because of the association with town-owned land, wasn't required to have underground utilities, but I would have to talk with the town manager to confirm that. I don't know that offhand.
My students, it's a significant more expense to.
It's a significant more expense for one house. It's not like you're building a subdivision. And this has already gone through, as far as I understand, the town planning board, and also the, the town engineer.
You know, someday, if we end up developing the parcel land that we own, and it makes sense to put it all underground, then it's something that we can be considered, but it just doesn't seem cost-efficient to do it now for one house.
If you recall, the, this, the expense for creating the right-of-way was borne by Mr. O'Neill.
Okay, I, okay.
And I think during the course of the negotiations, and, again, it's a subdivision plan, but as you said, it's one home, the cost of burying it would be excessive and somewhat unnecessary at this particular point in time, so my guess is that's why it wasn't required by the planning commission to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Somebody here?
Comments? Sir? Come up to the podium, please. Name and address.
My name is John Reddy. I live at sixty-nine Chestnut Street, which is the primary butter that's affected by the pole placements. It's been about a seven-year project, all told, and so I'm glad to be able to just ask a simple question. It's the first chance I've had to talk to, to Reading Light. I'm, I have one primary concern. If you look at the drawing, my home is represented, pole number one at one thirty-five, my concern, and it has been for seven years the project's been proposed, is to what extent light will shed into the northwest corner of my home. That sort of sticking-out part of my home is a three-season screened-in porch. It's living space for my family, and I'm concerned that the placement will have an adverse effect on my living conditions. So, I don't know to what extent. An underground burial, obviously, would mitigate that, but I'm not to what, sure at what extent pole placement can be adjusted to minimize the effect.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, you're concerned with lights on the poles?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
I don't think so. Do you have a light? You don't show a light indicated on that pole.
And any, any light going on this pole about the door to there?
Yeah, there's no light right now.
Right, but once the poles are up, once the poles are up, I doubt the poles are going to get moved to accommodate a light. So, I think the positioning of the poles is actually a relevant issue.
Do we have to come back to the board for a light placement?
Right. I don't disagree with you about the location, but there's no lights indicated on the map today for our, for.
Okay.
So, I don't think, there's a concern, because there's no light there. At least one of the ones I'm reading.
Okay.
Your, your light is.
He's right here.
Is the corner light?
Which number is it?
Number right here.
Okay.
So, he's talking about, number, pole one thirty-five.
Yeah, okay.
In our Jason Dewey's house, so.
Yeah.
I don't blame him, and, but there's no light there, so. You'll see the pole, but you won't have any light on.
Okay, so I have to wait for a day. So, my question would be, how would I receive notice that a light's going to be installed, and how will I then have an opportunity to discuss?
Mr. Gilberto.
I think that the best way to protect your, your concerns, sir, is to inform the public works and police departments who review any requests for a new light to be installed, that you object to a light in this location, so that it's on file here, in the event that it ever comes up in the future. I mean, that would be my suggestion, in order to document it.
Is, is there a light on a pole that's at the corner of Chestnut Street currently?
Yes, there is.
There should be.
There is, okay.
Which, I mean, based on what I've seen over the past year and a half, in terms of lights, would make it very unlikely that this pole would be a candidate for a light. Perhaps the second one in would be a pole, a pole number two six, two hundred and sixty-two feet.
Okay.
That's a potential candidate, just in my opinion, from what I've seen. But, I think the best thing to do would be to put a memo into our files to note your, your objection.
Who would I, who would I address that memo to?
I'll give you my card, and perhaps we could just put in an email.
Okay, if that satisfies my concern.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Any, anyone else in the audience have any concerns, questions? Mr. Yule?
Yeah, I, if I understood Mr. Reddy correctly, I think what his concern is, that is, once the pole is put up, and then if it was decided that a light, or there was an intention to put a light there later on, the battle to deal with that situation would be more difficult, because now you have to include the expense of moving the pole, which sometimes moving mountains are easier.
No, why would you move a pole? Just wouldn't put a light on that pole?
I don't blame him, and, but there's no light there, so. You'll see the pole, but you won't have any light on.
Okay, so I have to wait for a day. So my question would be, how would I receive notice that a light's going to be installed? And how will I then have an opportunity to discuss?
Mr. Gilpero.
I think that the best way to protect your, your concerns, sir, is to inform the public works and police departments who review any requests for a new light to be installed, that you object to a light in this location, so that it's on file here in the event that it ever comes up in the future. I mean, that would be my suggestion in order to document it.
Is there a light on a pole that's at the corner of Chestnut Street currently?
Yes, there is.
There should be.
There is, okay.
Which, I mean, based on what I've seen over the past year and a half in terms of lights, would make it very unlikely that this pole would be a candidate for a light. Perhaps the second one in would be a pole, a pole number 262, 262 feet.
Okay.
That's a potential candidate, just in my opinion from what I've seen. But I think the best thing to do would be to put a memo into our files to note your, your objection.
Who would I, who would I address that memo to?
I'll give you my card and perhaps we could just put it in an email.
Okay, that satisfies my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Any, anyone else in the audience have any concerns, questions? Mr. Deal.
Yeah, I, if I understood Mr. Reddy correctly, I think what his concern is that is once the pole is put up, and then if it was decided that a light, or there was an intention to put a light there later on, the battle to deal with that situation would be more difficult because now you have to include the expense of moving the pole, which sometimes moving mountains are easier.
No, why would you move a pole? Just wouldn't put a light on that pole?
Yeah, yes, you wouldn't put the light on, but that's hope.
We don't have a light on, we don't have a light in every single pole in town.
I, I understand. I'm just, you know, I think that's his, his, the purpose of him being here.
He doesn't want the light shining.
Right, so.
If I can just readdress, this particular project has been a horror show for me personally for seven years. So I'm not keen on the trust factor currently with working with the department, with, with all of the folks that are involved. And so I see a pole going up as an impediment in the future in that location because quite honestly, I've encountered that for seven years. Well, something's done, and then, well, you know, we can't go backwards, especially because of the complicated nature of the transaction, that it's a, a, a public road, but it's been paid for by a private individual, and it's been just very, very difficult. So I'm very hesitant to see a pole go up, knowing that human nature and the course of things, it's going to be very difficult to reverse that, if it makes sense. That's my concern. So you've captured my, you've captured my concern.
And the county minister gave you a card, and he's asked you to send him a note so you put something in the file, so.
Yeah, I just want to, oh, that's fine, but that's my sentiment, and so that's what my memo is going to capture. I don't know what that's going to be worth, to be very honest, because I haven't had a lot of success on this project.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Deal.
Can, can we approve this with the specification that no light can be put on that pole?
I believe we can. I believe we can write it into the decision, but I mean, remember that the decision for the light location becomes the town's either way, but that's one other way to document that restriction.
Because I think that will.
I would feel much better knowing that that exists as opposed to me resurrecting history at some point in the future. That would be helpful.
Brian, what's your experience been?
As far as, if, if going overhead with the light and the location, with the three poles on here, and the lines going overhead, if you ever need to relocate that light, say that light is affecting its home, and you can probably move it to the next pole down. If the system is ran underground, we have to put in lights, streetlights for any underground subdivisions. Now, once those underground streetlights go in, there's no relocating that light, because wherever that streetlight pole is, that's where it's going to stay, unless somebody's going to pay to have that, the lines dug up and everything relocated. But if you have three poles there, and say the first pole is, have an issue with this property, you can always relocate that light down to the second pole.
Brian, I think what, what they're trying to capture here is that at 135 feet in from Chestnut Street, we want to make a note change on our motion to make, state the fact that no light will be installed in that pole located 135 feet from Chestnut Street.
Okay.
How would that be recorded at RMLD?
Is that going to have a problem?
What's that?
Right, it wouldn't be recorded at the RMLD. It would have to, it would go back to the town.
They have to come down, back to the town.
For a light to be put on that pole.
Shouldn't have any effect on you.
Yeah, it wouldn't have any effect on us. It would come back, if this, if the town decides that they're going to put a light on that pole, this gentleman or somebody has to have it at record to state that there should be no light on that pole, because if the town says to the RMLD to place a light on that pole, they're going to place a light on that pole.
So again, if we amend the, we amend the decision to reflect his concern and then put a note in our files as well.
Exactly.
There's two ways that we've got if our request comes up in the future.
10 years when you're gone?
I'm a 25-year resident, so 10 years is nothing, right? I would appreciate that.
Okay. Someone want to amend the motion?
Mr. Howard.
Nobody shall ever be installed.
With no light installed on?
Pole number?
Pole number 135?
No.
On the pole Jason two.
Pole number NR?
They got a number for the pole, Michael.
2761 slash.
NR, 276 slash one slash two or something like that.
Slash one.
Slash one.
Right, yeah, 135 feet of Chestnut Street.
Which is, which pole is it that he doesn't?
2761.
2761.
One.
The, the first one in from Chestnut.
Should be installed on the?
Yeah, because he's on that corner lot.
Yeah.
Installed on, on the?
On all.
NR slash 276 slash one.
Yeah.
That's the pole ID.
Thank you, Mike.
Which is?
Mrs. Mattapelli? Sorry?
Your street address again? What's the street?
Mr. Reddy?
Mr. Reddy?
What, what, what number Chestnut are you?
69.
I'm 69.
69.
Do we want to say which is? No, you just?
No, I think we just reference the pole number.
Every rating.
That satisfies his.
Every pole has serial number. I guess that's, that's the number.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so. Mrs. Mattapelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the joint petition of Redding Municipal Light Department and Verizon New England Incorporated to locate three poles on Carpenter Street as shown in Plan Number 9, 1946 dated 11/18/2015, on condition that no streetlight shall be installed on pole NR slash 276 slash one.
Second.
Second, I'm Mr. Deal, for the discussion. Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Animus? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, well, we've been going on here for, anyone here for public comment before? Why don't we do that? Ryan, keep your waiting chair.
Hi, my name is Andrew Schultz. I'm the president of the Redding, North Redding Chamber of Commerce. The business community has come to me with great concerns about the actions of the ZBA as of late, and we want to bring it to the Board of Selectmen's purview. Specifically with the permitting for Bark and Roll, Ms. Francine Coughlin, who's a resident of this town, also is a businesswoman in this town, she's a member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, she's a woman who volunteers a lot of her time, very charitable in chamber events, very given woman. I want to preface my comments, which will feel a little bit strong tonight, that the Chamber wants to be a good business partner with, with the town. We're looking at helping to develop Route 28. We're also trying to establish a town day for town residents that the Chamber's going to pay for. We're trying to do a lot of things, and I have no personal knowledge what went on at these meetings. All I can tell the Board is, this is what numerous independent witnesses came to me with as the president. I was not there, I am just merely relaying what has been told to my constituents, which is the business community. Ms. Coughlin was not treated fairly when Bark and Roll was trying to get a permit for opening a business on Main Street. She was looking at trying to rehab an old dilapidated building that is a complete eyesore. I wrote a letter to the transcript a few weeks back commenting on, if you ride through Route 28 through Redding and through Andover, and you ride through North Redding, our stretch of 128 pales in comparison. And there's probably many reasons to go years back on that why that is, but that is the fact. We have a, a young businesswoman that wants to come into town, wants to fix up an eyesore, and put a building, open a dog grooming business and some boarding in a place that is zoned highway commercial. We're not talking about an adult bookstore, we're talking about a dog grooming business. If you can't put that on Route 28, I don't know where you can put it. The problem is, she was bullied at the first meeting. When I've told, again, I wasn't there, but there are numerous independent witnesses who corroborated the same story. That's why I'm here today. The Board of Selectmen appoints the ZBA, oversee the ZBA. I think you should know about this. That's why we're here as the business community to tell you these things. There are ZBA members that in the, the Chamber's position have very, there's an appearance of conflict. I'm an attorney in town, I'm a resident in town. I can't practice in a court, which I sit as a judge. I don't see how you can have people who develop commercial real estate, who own commercial real estate, who deal in commercial real estate, on a board determining who gets a permit, who gets, doesn't get a permit, when you have people on the board who lease to people in similar businesses. It just, it, it doesn't give a good appearance to the town. I'm all about transparency, that's why I'm here tonight. I've been asked by a lot of people to come here. Anyone who knows me knows this is not my style to lob grenades at people. But this is a problem. The paragraph referred to in the bylaws that denied this permit is a paragraph that, from my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, has never been used before in the history of North Redding. The paragraph that was used to deny this permit basically says that any business that makes any noise could be denied. I don't think that's the precedent we want to set to businesses who try to develop Route 28 and make it look more like Route 28 to Andover, make it look more like Route 28 in Redding. I think our curbside appeal is lacking. Those three houses we're talking about were right, right past the funeral home, there's three houses up going towards the bagel place. I mean, you guys know what they look like. I mean, it's an eyesore. I don't understand why a permit was denied on speculation. You have the main person who was against the permit is a next-door person who tried to buy the particular parcel of land, couldn't buy the parcel of land, then was against the person who was trying to buy it. I mean, I think the ZBA has to look at that and realize that appearances are important here. You guys as a board are very transparent. I think they need to be the same way. You can't have people on the board that are developing business that determine who gets a permit and who doesn't get a permit. This appeal will probably take a year or so in court to go through. This business owner is going to file suit against the town. She doesn't want to do that. She doesn't feel she got a fair shake. Again, I wasn't there, I'm going to say that five times tonight, I wasn't there, but from what I'm told, she wasn't given a fair shake by numerous people. The written decision hasn't even been written yet. Now, it's my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that that should have so many days that should be written. Well, that's holding up her appeal. She can't appeal or start the due diligence period until the decision is rendered. That I believe is sitting on a desk here at Town Hall somewheres. She has counsel now. She did not have counsel at the first meeting. I understand that she was basically shouted down, she just wasn't treated with respect. And we're just concerned that the president, that the ZBA used in denying this permit is not a good, what they denied this on, from what I'm told, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, you could deny business based on any kind of noise. I have a law office in Park Place. You could say, my clients come in and out with a car, that makes noise, we're going to deny your permit. I mean, that's the extent that this could be used. I just think the Board of Selectmen needs to know about this, this is very serious. I've never, I've been on the Chamber Board for a while, I've been the president just for a short period of time, I have never heard so many people so upset at one decision. And again, I wasn't there, I'm just relaying to you, multiple people have come to me. You see the letter in the transcript that a lot of people wrote on this issue. I, it doesn't seem like this woman was treated fairly. She is going to, she's going to appeal, that is going to cost the town money to defend it, it's going to be a Superior Court case. We do ask that Selectmen get in touch with Town Council, possibly talk to Town Council, and I don't, you know, also as a lawyer and a practitioner, I don't think the town has a real good leg to stand on on this. Maybe it's not something we should fight, and we should probably work as a business community to work with this business owner to come up with a common ground that makes sense for everybody involved, meaning the neighbor next door, the neighbors in the back. I mean, nobody wants a loud business next to them. There's no, there was no evidence that this business was loud, it was purely based on speculation. I believe one of the members of the ZBA actually said that, from what I understand. We just, it's very important that the business community and the town, Selectmen work as a team. We just think you as a board should know that the business community is very upset, and we're pushing, and since I've taken over as a president, I'm pushing the North Redding piece of the Chamber, because unfortunately, it has had a impression of being the Redding Chamber of Commerce. No, it's the Redding, North Redding Chamber of Commerce. We're trying to do things in town. We're having a casino night at the Moose Hall. We're trying to put together an actual full town day, possibly in the spring of, not this year, but next year, over at, we're looking at possibly over at the high school, where the community can come out, the local businesses can come out, they can show their, the restaurants can show their food, the local craftsmen can show their crafts. This is all small businesses, we don't have major corporations here in North Redding. We have a young woman trying to set a dog business up. If you can't put that on Route 28 where it's zoned highway commercial, where can you put it? It just, it boggles the mind that you have somebody that wants to fix up an old rundown building, and she was shut down based on pure speculation. Anyone, welcome to contact me if they want to discuss this. We just ask that if this does get back through a lawsuit, that consideration be made to, you know, do the right thing and properly, you know, let this woman establish her business. If she opens up her business and these dogs are barking all day, you guys don't have to renew her license, you can shut her down. This is a serious individual, a serious businesswoman, and she just wasn't given a fair shake. And we do ask the Board to please, you know, communicate with the ZBA, I know that's the Selectmen's purview, you appoint the ZBA members? We're just, we're very disappointed. And again, we want to work with the town, we're not, I don't come here trying to be a bomb thrower, but this is very important, we want this out in public, and we want to make sure that people, when they come in and open up a business, they're given a fair shake. And whether they were or not given a fair shake, the appearances they were not, and I think appearances are very important here. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
First of all, I, I think, I'm sure you chose your words carefully, but I'm somewhat offended by it only because, first of all, you're casting, casting aspersions against members of the Board of Appeals and attacking their character to a certain degree, and I think that's very unfortunate. These are long-serving members of the Board of Appeals who are well-seized, have done things very transparently over the years, and are very thoughtful in their decision-making process. Under liaison, I did have communication with members of the Board of Appeals during, after the first hearing and after the letters to the editor, and then after the decision was rendered. A lot of thought was given to it, and a lot of input was had by the director butters, particularly to the rear in Damon Street, which there appeared to be near unanimity of concern in relation to the impact of the quality of life on their property with this particular type of business. Relation to those, those homes that are there right now, those are homes, those were people that have lived there for?
Who lived next to a commercial, his own property.
No, no, excuse me, I'm talking about the parcels themselves, where residences belonging to one family for a number of years, and, you know, they treated them as their own family homes. They're now deceased, and it's now being, they're now being sold. Yes, it's a zoned commercial. The Board of Appeals has to take into consideration input from director butters once a petition is made. Now, it's my understanding that the, that the petitioner and her attorney at the second hearing would provide an opportunity to withdraw their application or to continue the hearing and chose not to. Again, choice they certainly made of their own free will. As a result, the decision was made, and the only source of appeal now is Superior Court. You know, as far as, you know, whether or not this board makes a decision to go forward with the case or not, it's not our decision. The town has made a decision, the Board of Appeals has made a decision. In order for them to reconvene, I mean, another petition has to be put forth that's substantially different, unless the Board of Appeals grants it. Those options are available.
I'd like to speak to that, if I may. First of all, I'm speaking on behalf of the business community, I'm not speaking on behalf of myself. I wasn't at these meetings, I'm going to say that again.
No, I know, but you, you made some pretty strong comments in relation to the character that individuals on the board.
Mr. O'Leary, I want to hear what you have to say, but you have to listen to me, too.
I heard what you said, and I don't like it.
You were speaking over me. What I'm concerned about is, statements were made, I've had a bunch of people come to me in the past two weeks, really in uproar about this. Now, like I said before, right or wrong, there is a perception, and I'm, I'm saying it's a perception, I'm not saying anything untoward happened, I'm saying there's a perception that this woman was not given a fair shake for whatever reason. Now, these residents behind there, I understand the whole NIMBY issue, I get it, I'm a business man myself, but when you live next to one, next to Route 28, I live across the street from the park, okay? I live at 4 Central Street. Right across the street from the park, it was a temporary police station, okay? Then it became a youth center. Did I complain? station, okay? Then it became a youth center. Did I complain? No, because when you live next to a park, you've got to expect they're going to develop the park. I didn't want a police station across the street from my house for a year and a half when they were rebuilding the police station. But when you live next to a commercial, his own property, you have to expect there could be something commercial in that property. And the issue that, again, I wish somebody would explain to me, why was the statute that was cited, a statute that was never cited before?
Maybe potentially there wasn't a need to.
Well-
I mean, it's in the, it's on the books, it's on the books for a reason. But as far as a public hearing goes in relation to the Board of Appeals, and that the butters living next to commercial property, we have bylaws in place that require site plan review, hearing special permit processes, so that the butters are directly notified as to what's being proposed and can have input.
Correct. As they should.
That's what transpired. Now, this petitioner, you know, had the opportunity, and again, I don't know what she did or didn't do as far as approaching the director butters, as far as going out there and informing them or educating them as to what potentially was going to be there. You know, whether she did or did not do a good job, it's not for me to determine whether or not-
Well, I think it's a liaison. I think you know who was behind getting the butters involved in that, and that's, you know-
But by the same token, again, she has an opportunity, had an opportunity, go knock on those people's doors, tell her what she was planning, and sell the project.
There's, let's be honest. There's nothing she could have sent to those people that were going to sell them on the project. You know that, and I know that. Let's call it what it is.
I, I don't, well, if that's the case, if that's the case, then the people don't want it there. And again, the concern in relation to forty or fifty dogs being housed-
If you can't have that on Route 28 in a highway commercial zone, where can you have it? This is not an adult bookstore.
Why, this is, this is why we have special permitting process, so that the public isn't subjected to things that they do not necessarily want.
Why is there some more business on Route 62?
Apparently, there isn't a direct of butters that are concerned about it. And again, that particular business has been there for decades.
Okay, but that, again, that's more of a residential area than this.
Decades, 1960s. That was originally built in the 1960s.
I understand, Mr. O'Leary, your position is, I also understand, your brother's on the other board, and I get to put you in a difficult spot.
You also have to understand that my brother recused himself, did not participate in it, and did not have any-
I understand that.
So I think that would be nice of you to say, too, rather than say, "My brother's on the board." Matter of fact, true. But the fact of the matter is, did not participate, refused himself, and was not present.
With all due respect, you're not listening to anything I'm telling you. This is a whole business community that's upset at this. I would think as a Selectman, you'd be concerned about that. This is not me talking.
No one is more concerned with the business community, or been more of a supporter of the business community than myself. And I put up forty years of trying to assist the business community in growth here. So, but when residential neighborhoods are impacted, they have a right to be heard, and there's a forum for it, and it took place. Now, whether or not, again, whether or not they took the advice of members of the board to offer an opportunity to take a step back, go do some more selling here, hold it in abeyance, come back and with a different plan, they chose not to do that. We can't change that.
Woman had an offer on a piece of property. Why, again, what I don't, what I have trouble with, and this is, now this is me speaking, this is not the chamber, why was a particular part of the statute that was never used before used in this particular case? There is no answer to that. Exactly. There is no good answer to that question.
No, no, it wasn't necessary to use it at any other time particularly. There was no, no need. There were other reasons for denial.
With all due respect, I do not buy that. Okay, that's me talking.
Why is it there? Why are those there? Why is it in the statute? It's for-
Why is it never used?
It wasn't necessary. But anyway, I agree. It's gone on too long. Public comment.
Michael has a question.
I'd be happy to talk, you know, if you have to talk to him.
Just a question.
Tell me a time.
I think Mr. O'Leary made, made one really good point. And that's about, because Carly, Ms. Coughlin had reached out to me. And I had actually asked her about, why didn't you get the opportunity to go reach out to the neighbors as well? But what I just learned recently was, the public hearing was only one evening. They closed the hearing after the first thing, which I don't think typically that happens. And I'm just curious why that happened. Is there an answer? Why they only had a public hearing? That usually they, they continue it. So people can do data research, and she has an opportunity to sort of maybe check, you know, see what her heading check is and what she needs to adjust. But that didn't seem, that opportunity wasn't granted.
My understanding was that the opportunity was provided, and they didn't choose to avail themselves of that opportunity.
And just point of reference, she did not have counsel at the first meeting either. She did not have counsel at the first meeting. That property was hardly, I don't think she truly understood her rights. And she also thought she was going to get a fair shake.
Okay. Well, if she declined the opportunity to continue the hearing so she can do some research, that's the first I've heard of that. Thank you.
Mr. E.
Yeah. I just wanted to get a clarification on what you said and on the establishment. You mentioned that she was bullied.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You mentioned that she was bullied. Was she bullied by the zoning board or by people in the, that would participate?
I don't know the name of the individual. Again, I wasn't there.
No, I'm not looking for individuals. I'm just talking about what group. Was it the zoning board or was it those in the-
No, it wasn't the zone. She felt, and she and other people that came to me felt that, it was one of the complainants. It wasn't a resident, though. It was a business owner. And it was, she felt that the board did not control this person. The board wasn't abusive to her.
Oh, okay, because, because I-
They just felt they didn't control the situation.
I think that's what we were kind of getting the feeling, that's what you were saying.
No, that is not the case. No.
Okay. And because that, so it was, it was people that were participants of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And reading the media coverage of it, it does corroborate what people told me.
Okay. Now-
I just want to remind the board, okay, that in, in public comment, we take public comment, we may ask questions, but we're not debating the issue.
No, no.
It's not, it's not a regular-
I'm not looking to, Bob, I'm not looking to debate. I just want to get some clarification on my part. The, the other question I have is, this is bark and roll?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the same as the North Reading boarding and grooming? Because-
I don't know. I don't believe so, but I don't know.
Because they used to be the same, it looks like it's, did she move?
She used to be across the street, I believe, at one point, years ago. But I don't, honestly, I don't have the intimate details of her comment.
Okay, I don't know where she's now. Okay, so that's, so she's not where she used to be. She's moved.
Yes. She used to be across the street, almost, almost across the street at one point.
But-
Had them in front of Mario's.
Right. She used to be by there.
Yeah.
Okay, so she's not there anymore.
Correct.
Okay.
So I just, you know, I appreciate, you know, the chamber, you know, coming, coming forward and, you know, expressing concerns. Back a while ago, several years ago, actually, maybe it's even more than that, the chamber, we would first of all have, I don't remember if it was quarterly or semiannually, a meeting with the chair, vice chair, town administrator, and representatives of the chamber, just to talk about concerns and things. And this is an aside. It's not so related to this. And of course, the chamber is willing, if you want to get on our agenda to talk about any project, you're certainly welcome to do so.
Bob, I've been participating in their meetings. I attend their meetings on behalf of the board.
Michael Frisco in Reading, North Reading, and John Halsey in Reading have been liaisons to the chamber. And you guys are all welcome to come to our meetings. We encourage the Selectmen's input.
And I'm a member of the chamber, but not, not one that's working very hard. I have this job first.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilberto.
Just a note to the fact that I believe Ms. E. contacted me today to arrange the next quarterly meeting. So, I mean, we've been engaged-
At least she contacted you?
She did, yes. And we've been, we generally have a pretty open and ongoing discussion regarding the matters of going on in town, in addition to Selectman Frisco and your participation in the chamber events.
I guess, you know, one thing just to keep in mind, and you could argue one way or another, associated whether this person was handled right, or which, which particular bylaw, or, you know, was, was used in terms of making the decision. There was a process. The ZBA acts to deal with these specific issues. And, you know, no matter what happens, someone's going to be unhappy on one side or the other. So, you know, I, I know of no real reason that, it's never come across to me, that the ZBA hasn't taken into account those trying to get a permit, and those abutters that, you know, clearly would be impacted by it and try to come up with a fair decision. I did not go to that meeting. I have no idea what happened, short of, you know, what you hear around. And, you know, I've always been one that, okay, I'll listen to all of this, but somewhere in there may be some facts, and some of it's emotion. But, you know, I appreciate you bringing-
And there was a chance, listen, she's going to file her appeal, and there's a chance for the sides to get together and try to work it out. And I encourage everybody involved, you know, I'll be working, I'll be off the chamber. There's got to be a way this can happen.
Yeah. Well, the point that Steve made is that, and maybe she didn't get it, is that generally the ZBA tries to find another opportunity rather than just turn something down.
I think this is the second time she's been turned down, though.
Well, that I don't know. And, you know, I think they've gone a long way to try to get something settled, keep it out of the courts and everything else, so.
The Board of Appeals has done a very good job of keeping us out of the courts, but I think it's important to note, and probably little consolation, that, you know, the members that voted no feel badly about it. They feel badly about it, you know, trying to see their way clear to issue it and give it to her. And again, the ZBA generally acts as a pressure relief valve, you know, for whether it be the appeal process or for the review process in order to, to make things work within the zoning bylaws and try and come to some sort of compromise. And in this particular case, they couldn't see their way beyond the opposition of the residential neighborhood. It wasn't so much about the noisy commercial neighbor. And again, I heard the same things in relation to, you know, the person's behavior and read about it, too. And maybe that could have been handled differently, but it didn't necessarily skew, didn't skew the decision-making process of the members of the board. They were able to sift through that.
And I think when the complaint-
This is unfortunate. And there is an appeal process.
There's still time to fix it.
The discussion, you know, can still be ongoing, but, you know, we as a board don't interfere with the zoning Board of Appeals' decision-making process. Yes, we appoint them, and they're a reflection on us in relation to, you know, how they treat people, whether they're adjudicating properly, and those sorts of things. And that's what is considered. And again, these people have been long-serving members of this particular board-
I know some of them personally.
-who, who really have do a very good job, do it to the best of their ability. As far as what their backgrounds are, I think it's a well-suited for the most part.
I just think, it's a little, and I'll be real brief, because I don't want to take up any more time. I think it is tough. I think it is like an attorney practicing law in the court, as they said, as a judge, too. But regardless, there's going to be a complaint that's going to file. Let's get everybody together when the complaint files, and see if we can reach a common ground. Mr. O'Leary, I would ask, as a liaison, if you go to the ZBA and relay the chamber's concerns, and, you know, maybe we can set up a meeting with all concerned parties and try to hash something out, because the last thing the town wants is a lawsuit. You know, as a lawyer, I know we're not cheap, and nobody wants to spend money on legal fees that you don't need to. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I, uh, go first.
I have to let you out, then. Go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions, just for my own edification. You said she was denied previously?
I believe so, yes.
Do you know when that was?
I, I'm sorry, I don't.
Do you know if that was in writing, that denial? Was after a public hearing?
Um, I don't know. I believe she was, but I'm not, I don't have any personal knowledge about that. Yeah.
Okay. What about this time? You, you mentioned that it was sitting on somebody's desk. Do you know when that hearing was?
I can speak to that.
It, Mr.-
So I spoke with Ms. Coughlin today. I could speak to kind of where things stand procedurally. I believe the bylaw provides that a decision has to be issued ninety days from when the application is filed with the zoning Board of Appeals. We're within that ninety-day window. I think that the frustration has been that some time has elapsed since the decision was made, and I think there may have been an expectation that a decision would be issued more quickly than it was able to be issued. That said, I did speak with the presiding member of the ZBA today. And my understanding is that that decision has been written, that he has signed the decision, and he's notified the other members to come in and sign the decision as well. So that should be taken care of shortly.
The problem is she has an offer on a house, on the property, that the locusts that's contingent upon getting the zoning approval. So, I mean, the owner of the house is not going to stay there forever, wait, you know, for a long time for, for her to get the approval to run her business. They're going to find, she's afraid she's going to lose the property, but I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I have, I have a public comment. Oh, okay, you guys have public comment. Let them go first.
I just have a question.
Name and address.
Seth Passakarna, 7 Fairway Road. Good to see you all again. I just have a question that might put some of our comments in perspective. Was the only basis that she was denied the opportunity to develop that land based on a section of the zoning bylaws relating to noise, and somehow the zoning Board of Appeals says a discretion to-
I guess we have to wait until we see the, the written decision.
Yeah.
Okay. And the board hasn't been involved. Steve is the liaison, so you may have a little more information than I do.
Okay. You mentioned that. I just, I didn't know what the decision was. Apparently, it's not written yet.
I think it was section four, paragraph F, and related to noise. I think that's what she told me.
Mr. Gilberto.
So, generally, under the bylaw, in order to be able to issue a special permit, the special permit granting authority has to find a series of items, there are six items to be the case, before it can legally issue the special permit. And I think, from what I understand, not having seen the decision, but from what I have understood from the conversations that I've had, at least one of those conditions could not be met, which is what precluded the board from issuing the decision. But that's generically based on what I've heard. I think you should wait to see the decision, which is a public record. You can be provided a copy of it.
I guess just as a general comment, as the Board of Selectmen is well aware, we have a significant issue at Pluff Ave and Route 28 related to a business in the Highway Business District on the corner of Pluff Ave and Route 28, with, I believe it's fifteen or sixteen residential neighborhoods that are impacted by that business. That business never actually submitted a special application when it purchased the property and started operating there. Very encouraged by Mr. O'Leary's comments tonight, that when residents or residences are affected by a business in the Highway Business District, that the residents will have a fair opportunity to be heard. As you might be aware, there's a zoning Board of Appeals hearing coming up in March related to this issue, as well as another zoning Board of Appeals hearing, which I have personally filed, related to that business, which will be scheduled at a future date. But I guess I would encourage any of the members of the Board of Selectmen to come to the hearing in March to see what transpires as it, as it relates to the conflict between business, the Highway Business District and residential zone parcels abutting that district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else see a public comment?
I have a public comment. I'm going to just take this opportunity now to do the public, do a public comment rather than wait till the rest of the evening, just because the folks at home may fall asleep. And, you know, it's something I have done with a lot of thought. And so, you know, I have a prepared statement. I'm going to run through it real quick, and then we can move right on to our regular meeting, okay?
All right.
So, many of you know, back in January, I pulled my election, my papers for election, for re, to seek reelection to the Board of Selectmen. And I was pretty excited about continuing my, my efforts here on the board and my work. You know, to try to keep making this town a better place, better place for our kids to gra, be raised, and a better place for our kids to raise their kids someday. You know, in this folder, I have over a hundred and fifty signatures already signed, ready to go. And, you know, I was ready to go. But unfortunately, a few weeks ago, Bob, you and I, we had some difference of opinion about what the leadership direction we need to go in in this town. And so, you know, it was clear to me after that, that it became very clear to me that I'm not really in support of that. And I just need, I think it would be best for me to move on. Best farther probably the tone of this board for me to move on, and to end my tenure on this board after my term ends in May. So with that said, I want to officially announce I will not be seeking reelection to the Board of Selectmen. However, I will be submitting a citizen activity record to this, to this board for appointment to the Economic Development Committee, because I think that's where I would like to spend my time. And I'm committed to that. I really pushed hard to get it as far as it is today, and I want to stay committed to that as long as I have the support of this board to be appointed to that committee. And, and I look forward to working with you through that, that means. But thank you for listening, and it's too bad it's going to end here, but I just feel for, best for me and my family, this is the decision I have to make. So we can move on to the regular meeting now.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, chapter seventy resolution.
Public comment, Mr. Chairman?
Oh.
I wanted to make a statement. Sorry, my-
No worries.
... you just may, I, I didn't get a chance to jump in after.
Uh, no, I didn't know you wanted to. My apologies.
Michael Kuschevsky at 1 Fairway Road, North Reading, Mass., obviously. I'm actually surprised that this whole dog grooming business and boarding has really been denied based on six bylaws or rules. I don't think we got a fair shake when we went up to the zoning board and brought up our concerns, because noise creation directly affecting the abutters is an issue with Zenelli Construction and Zenelli Excavating. They have eighteen-wheel trucks that are heavy-duty. You can't get bigger than an eighteen-wheel truck, and that's operating on that property. Not only that, and as you are aware, Mr. Gilberto, that there is an appeal that's happening, but he has made changes to an abutting property that he does not own, that is not lawful. And the town let it happen, and not only that, the inspector let it happen, where they made the changes. He put up the fence in a week. And I feel like there has got to be some kind of conflict of interest, because what is happening is an inconsistent statement, where we allow large excavation equipment to operate on a single property that directly affects an abutter's home within a hundred feet, a hundred feet or less. But we can't allow a draw, an indoor dog grooming business to own and operate on 28 in a commercial zone. Something to consider as we move forward through all these appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else see if a public comment? Deanna, I see you sitting there. Just, no, okay.
Well, I, I guess I would like to say something about, is that all right?
Sure.
We never had a long one like this.
It's okay.
Deanna Castor, Nine Bright Way. It's been a long time since I've been here, but under the circumstances-
Welcome back.
Yeah, it's nice to be back, but for the wrong reasons. Unfortunately, I knew that Michael was going to make that statement tonight, and I think it's a sad day for North Reading. I think it's a sad day for North Reading, because I think we need every capable, successful, forward-thinking, strategic person who has a all-hands-on-deck relationship building, positive, passionate, just incredible ability to move this town forward. We have a lot of very big challenges and projects ahead of us, and that needs a lot of professional-minded people, and people that have the time, the energy, the character, and the responsibility, and the trustworthiness to see those things through, not only just for North Reading, but working in partnership with other communities as well, and also at the state level. That's no small, it's no small task. And I think that collectively, you all have a tremendous responsibility. Your volunteerism is very much appreciated, but it still does need someone who has the time and the energy and the talent, and the forward and critical thinking that can get those things done. And I do think that Michael has brought a significant contribution to this board and to this community. And I'm hard-pressed to think of what's going to happen, void of that kind of commitment and volunteerism and professionalism. So I'm hoping, but I would never pressure him, that night, tonight isn't the last time they'll have the opportunity to say how blessed we are, and how grateful I personally am, and as a community member and taxpayer, for all your hard work, your tireless dedication, for your self- Think of all these things that he touches. And I'm hard-pressed to think of what's going to happen, void of his energy. He's a critical thinker, he's got strategic vision, he's a relationship builder, and every sense of the word. He has the ability to negotiate, to compromise, to be fair, and mostly to be generous. And I really hope that this board takes a very inward look at what we're trying to accomplish in this community, to make it a better place and a place that we all want our children to grow up in, and their children, if they want to be here. And ask yourselves, can we afford to not have Michael Prisco on the Board of Selectmen going forward?
What's this related to?
Seth Passakarna, 7 Fairway Road. I didn't know that Michael Prisco was going to announce his resignation tonight, but and I couldn't possibly state what was just stated more eloquently. And I totally agree, we need someone with a vision for the future, a person who has strategic partnerships with businesses and with residents. And I think he brings a lot to the table. And he appears to be objective, and he appears to genuinely approach his duties as a selectman unbiased and with an eye towards fairness for everyone and an opportunity for everyone to be heard. And I have dealt with him on several issues in this town, and I have always felt that he has treated each problem fairly and objectively, and tried to do what is right and in the best interests of everybody in this town. You can't please everybody, but he tries to do what is right. And I echo the concerns of other citizens here, that we should not let someone like Michael Prisco slip away. He has a vision for this town, and he would be a great asset to our community for the future. Thank you for your comments.
Next item on our agenda, Chapter 70 Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution entitled, "Resolution Calling for Full Funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's Recommendations."
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion?
This was proposed by the superintendent of the school committee?
Yes.
Michael, you were chairing the meeting, so you might want to elaborate more as to what John Bernard was proposing in relation to this. I'm trying to actually find it. Does anybody know what page it's on?
Let's see. I've read it.
It was right after, it's right after the RMLD hearing.
Here.
Right after the RMLD hearing.
Well, I'm not sure I have really anything to add on this, because I don't think we really talked much about it.
No, that's why it's on the agenda. We haven't talked about it. Basically, you know, there's a couple of things going on. One is that there's a review at the state level on the Chapter 70 formula. And then there's the ongoing, as the state meeting its obligations associated with fully funding our schools. And if we go back through history, Chapter 70, especially since the last recession, has not kept up with the overall growth required to provide what's considered to be an adequate education. So as a result, the burden has fallen further and further on the town to support the school budget, not that we don't in a large sense. So, I'd be happy to read the resolution, but I mean, basically, this is aimed at, you know, getting our legislators and getting everybody organized to put pressure on the State House and the legislature to change the rules and to provide additional Chapter 70 funding for schools.
Yeah, and one other thing that you sort of layer over the top of this is the unfunded mandates. And I know the school did give a presentation a few weeks back on their unfunded mandates, and I, don't quote me on the number, but I know it's well over $9 million in unfunded mandates into our budgets. And it is something that needs to be addressed, and I think taking this resolution on and focusing some attention on, hopefully will bring to light some of those $9 million of money that the taxpayers have to put up, even though we have no control over what gets done with it.
Superintendent Bernard wanted, you know, he wants the Board of Selectmen, he's asked for support of, I guess Abby's gone with the finance committee. Is she hiding behind you? No, she's gone. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, I think as part of the resolution here, the important part here is the rationale behind it. Just to paraphrase it, the Foundation Budget Review Commission was formulated under the, by the legislature in the fiscal year '16 budget, was charged with examining the Foundation Budget Chapter 70 formula. And basically, the findings of that commission, when it was all said and done, said that the, found that the current formula understates the cost significantly in two areas, which are employee health insurance and special education. And if the recommendations of this commission had been implemented, the fiscal '16 budget, state funding for education would have been about $500 million more than it was. However, if Chapter 70 reflected the true cost of education, the number would be closer to $2 billion. So, you know, basically what they found is that the formulas that are being implemented and utilized are understating these costs and therefore shortchanging and not fully funding the money that's due back to the cities and towns. So basically, the, our school committee, and I think we should too, embrace this resolution, send it to our legislators, and encourage them to do the best they can to augment and fully fund, you know, Chapter 70.
Do we want to read this for the public's sake? I'd be happy to do that.
You can let our clerk do it.
Okay. Do you have it in front of you?
I do. It's a resolution calling for full funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations. Whereas the Massachusetts Foundation Budget Review Commission identified two areas, employees' health insurance and special education, where the Massachusetts Foundation budget significantly understates the true cost of educating students in the Commonwealth and has failed to keep pace with rising costs. Whereas this underfunding means the cost of providing a quality education has increasingly been borne by local communities, most often at the expense of other vital municipal operations. Whereas investing in education today leads to higher incomes and thus less investment in police, prisons, subsidized healthcare, low-income housing, welfare, et cetera, in the future. Whereas state and local economies are most effectively strengthened by investing in education and increasing the number of well-educated workers. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of North Reading, by the Board of Selectmen, calls on the Massachusetts Legislature and the Governor of Massachusetts to fully fund and adopt the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the immediate future. The rationale, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, FRBC, was established by the legislature in the fiscal year '16 budget and was charged with examining the Foundation Budget Chapter 70 formula. The formula was first established as part of the education reform legislation in 1993 and has not been thoroughly reviewed or updated since that time. The FBRC found that the current formula understates costs significantly in two areas, employee health insurance and special education. If the recommendation of the FBRC had been implemented in the fiscal year '16 budget, state funding for education would have been about $500 million more than it was. However, if Chapter 70 reflected the true cost of education, the number would be closer to $2 billion. Spending by school districts over the required net school spending amounts has increased as a whole for more than a decade, indicating that communities are using local property taxes and diverting funding from other portions of municipal budgets to fund their schools. In fiscal year '14, the total spending above foundation in the state was $1.7 billion. At the same time, the state's commitment to municipal aid has declined. Since 2001, unrestricted local aid has been cut by 43 percent. The net effect is a combination of cuts to local and school services and an increasing reliance on the regressive property tax. The evidence overwhelmingly establishes the correlation between a well-educated workforce and a higher and higher-income individuals. States that invest more in education have a higher-paid workforce. Also, states that increase the level of education of their population see greater productivity and higher wages over time. The link can then easily be made between higher-paid individuals and less reliance on various forms of government assistance, as well as lower rates of crime. A state's high school and college attainment rates are important factors in the state's overall economic strength. Additionally, investments in education can have significant long-term impacts on state and local economies, as well-educated individuals tend to stay relatively low and contribute tax dollars to the state and municipality in which they reside. In general, the taxes paid over time by these individuals are substantially higher than the cost of their public education.
Okay, so on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Thank you, Kathleen. We have legal bills for December.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for December 2015 in the amount of $9,578.46 as follows. Copelman and Page, PC General, $6,410.46. Copelman and Page, PC Labor, $1,890. Copelman and Page, PC, J.T. Berry, $1,278, for a total of $9,578.46.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion of questions regarding legal bills? How are we looking with respect to the budget, based on the fact that we're into our eighth month, coming close to, well, this would be through January?
That's correct. It's through December, actually, yes.
Oh, actually December, so half a year.
You're correct, half of the year, one of the two town meetings that are budgeted through. And again, when you back out the costs associated with the J.T. Berry property and special council, I think you find that we're right on pace in terms of where we ought to be. Again, when you back out those expenditures.
Yeah. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an action that's associated with the acceptance of Rondon Terrace as a public way, which occurred at the October 2015 town meeting. There was some difficulty on the part of the developer to record the street acceptance documents in the land court, and that required that there would be execution of some deeds and associated paperwork between the town and the abutting property owners. And so I believe we prepared a motion, and there's a document in the signature folder as well, that would complete this, at which point we turn around and then file this with, I believe, the land court to finalize the taking.
So what is specifically missing?
So, there needed to be a certification from the town that we had accepted the street, and I'm just reading from the town planner's report, that we've accepted the street, and also the property comprising the street as shown on the land court plans. Town council prepared a document, and we discovered during the process that there were additional properties along Rondon Terrace who we believe had an interest in the land on which the public way has been located.
Okay.
Before we could accept, before we could finalize the acceptance, we needed easements from each of those abutters.
Okay.
So we're now asking that the board accept those easements.
So we have the easements.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Who made the motion? Who made the motion?
I didn't think we had a motion.
Yeah, you made the motion.
There should be a motion.
We didn't have a motion?
No, I didn't think so.
No. There was a motion. I think... I know, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We didn't read it yet.
Do you need it read?
Yes.
Just the motion, not the...
Just the motion, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board accept on behalf of the town those deeds and grants presented to it in the form approved by town council for the purpose of providing the town with the fee or easements within the layout of Rondon Terrace as it was laid out by the board and accepted by the vote of the October 5, 2015 town meeting, under Article 23, to allow for public use of the way and to endorse written acceptance forms to that effect for recording.
Second. Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Keep in mind, I was in South Carolina this morning. I'm here now, so I think I'm a little groggy.
That doesn't give us any excuses.
Appointments, reappointments, Martins Pond Committee, we'll do them one at a time, of course. Do we have separate motions?
There should be two motions in the package.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following name for reappointment as a member of the Martins Pond Reclamation Study Committee for a term to expire on December 31, 2015, Chris C. Butler, Nine Shore Road.
Second.
Do you hear a second? Second, Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? How many openings do we have there? Is there, anyone know? Is there any beyond this, are there any openings?
I'm sorry, I lost track. Where are we? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that information in front of me right now.
Okay. I just bring it up because if there are some openings, we just say, you know, we're looking for volunteers. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. And we have East Middlesex Mosquito Control Representative.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint the following as a representative to the East Middlesex Mosquito Control Project for a term to expire on December 31, 2017, Robert F. Bracy, Health Director.
Second.
Second. Why, Mr. O'Leary? Any discussion? I think this is a great appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just going back to the last one, I was a little sleepy at the wheel there. I am the liaison, and they have a full membership.
They have a full membership, I do.
I understand it.
But there was only one candidate, so...
Right. They can always use more, one candidate that was expiring. They can always use more people that want to be involved.
All right, Kinda Morgan, Jeff.
Yes, I passed to each of you a notice from DPW, I mean, DPU. I'd like to read this on behalf of the public who would be listening. DPW Notice of Public Comment and Hearing. DPU 16-01 docket number of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company petitions the Department of Public Utilities for authority to perform geotechnical and other surveys on certain private properties. What that means is that the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company has filed a petition requesting that the DPU grant authority to enter upon property of 23 private landowners determined to be geotechnical survey properties who have not previously granted access to their land. The geotechnical survey may require the company to use horizontal directional drill. Docket DPU 16-02 of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company petitions the Department of Public Utilities for authority to perform vernal pool and other surveys on certain private properties. properties, which means the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company has filed a petition requesting that the DPU grant authority to enter upon land owned by 17 private landowners determined to be vernal pool survey properties who are within 200 feet of the proposed project and who have not previously granted access to their land. A copy of the company's petition and a complete set of exhibits is available on the department's A copy will also be available for public viewing at the public libraries of each city or town where the vernal survey properties are located. I was hoping to contact the library to see if they did have it. I'll do that tomorrow. Any person who desires to submit written comments on the company's petition may do so by filing an original and two copies of such comments with Mark DiMarini, spelled M-A-R-I-N-I, Secretary, Department of Public Utilities, 1 South Station, 5th Floor, Boston, Massachusetts, 02110. An electronic copy of all comments should also be sent by email to each of the following: One, the company's attorney, James L. Messenger Esquire, at I-M-E-S-S-E-N-G-E-R at G-O-R-D-O-N-R-E-S dot com; Two, the department at DPU dot e-filing gas-state-m-a dot U S; and Three, the department's hearing officer in this proceeding, Stephen August, at Stephen, with a S-T-E-P-H-E-N, dot August, at state dot m-a dot U S. Written comments should be submitted no later than May 6, 2016. Written comments should specify the property location, identify any concerns about the survey, and request any relevant conditions to be placed on the pipeline company to protect property and/or to ensure the opportunity for the landowner to be present during the survey. Oral comments are given equal weight by the department in its review of the petition, and the public will have that opportunity on Wednesday, April 6, at 7:00 p.m., at the Linfield Middle School Auditorium at 505 Main Street, Linfield, Massachusetts; also, on Thursday, April 14, 7:00 p.m., at the Andover High School Auditorium, 80 Shawshin Road, Andover, Mass. I will attend either one as my schedule permits. The DPW will be issuing its order based on the oral and written comments from affected landowners, the general public, and responses from the company to any written questions posed by the DPU.
So Jeffrey, you have a question? Have they provided a list of the specific... Yeah, whose property? Lot owners at this point?
They have. Yeah. There are, so there are three filings that are pending, one for geotechnical survey access, one for vernal pool access, and I mean, each of those, I believe that there is one property owner each in North Reading in those categories that is impacted, so one vernal pool and one for geotechnical survey.
So is there a piece of town property that's impacted?
No, there's no municipally-owned property in these, in either of these listings. And in the third listing, which is for general survey access, there are 24, I believe, in North Reading.
Yeah.
We have a listing. And actually, all this information is available, not only on the DPU site, but on the town website as well. We've went to the DPU website.
So are we notifying everybody? How are we...
They're required to be notified by Kinder Morgan through the process.
They have been notified, okay, and so have we.
We've been notified that those property owners were notified, yes. We do not own any property that's subject to either of these filings at this point in time.
But we have some property too that we would have been notified from?
Well...
The general survey?
For whatever, well, for a variety of reasons that came up in today's Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, Kinder Morgan has chosen not to seek DPU assistance in getting onto municipally-owned land at this point in time.
Not interested.
And I don't, I don't think we know the reason at this point, do we?
I believe there was some reference to whether municipal cooperation fit into the statutory definition of person.
As a person, right.
Because the language is fairly restrictive, so.
Okay. And so the meeting, the two meetings that are scheduled, they're April 6 at Linfield Middle School Auditorium?
Yes, yes.
And Thursday, April 14 at 7:00 p.m., Andover High School Auditorium. And they've all gotten a notice?
Our understanding is that Kinder Morgan is required to notify.
Mr. O'Leary?
I would maybe just suggest that the administration, since we know who they are too, just notify them also, make them aware, you know, give them the link to the, our website and the DPU website, and say, you know, we've been notified that they're on the list, they're being impacted, and there's a hearing affecting the property, assist the landowners.
And probably, you know, those board members that are going to attend would be probably a good idea.
There are 26, but we have, we have a listing.
Anything else come out of your meeting today?
Well, they are looking at a meeting in Draycut, not next month, but...
March 20.
March 28, to see if we can have some of our federal representatives attend that meeting, and possibly along with some state representatives. We're not sure how big we should go about this, because if it's too big, then it becomes a hearing, and that's really out of our scope as a committee. So we're trying to keep it more, smaller than that, so we can have a more one-on-one conversation.
Okay. How is the, Mr. Chairman, just how is the coalition's, what's their feeling in relation to their legislative delegation support in relation to our concerns?
Well, you know, it was interesting.
Just at the state level and then congressional level, where are we?
Well, we understand that the feedback we got that Seth Maltin seemed to be, and I think it's a matter of interpretation of the conversations, but I have not had direct conversations with Congressman Maltin, but that he has expressed that he has concerns about the pipeline, but he has clearly identified that there are needs for gas. So the, you know, the feeling was that he's on this, towards the side of supporting the pipeline. That was, you know, these were people that spoke with him and had those conversations, and that's pretty much their interpretation.
If that's the case, I guess, you know, again, if there's a substantiated need, and again, I don't claim to be close enough to it yet, whether there is or there isn't, because all sorts of arguments, but if there's a substantiated need, there's a substantiated need. I think what the question is, is this the most appropriate route?
Yeah.
It may be the cheapest route for them, but is it the most appropriate route? And if that's the case, there is a substantiated need, then I think we need our delegations really to be working on the DPU to assist us in getting a more appropriate route that's less intrusive.
I have to honestly say, Steve, I don't need to, I have to honestly say that I think the, if not, at 99.9, I think that the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline is, is just against the pipeline. They do not want the pipeline.
This is the coalition.
This is the coalition, that's correct. And that's the, that's the tact that they take. Now, they are doing it in a way that is, is, is open and, and I guess fair, and they're trying to get all the facts together, but then it becomes a question, you know, and we're all maybe guilty of this, you know, we believe what we want to believe, and I think that we had some information saying that the, I believe, I'm not sure if it was Kinder or Spectra at this point, but that they weren't meeting the...
Sounds like a Bond movie.
Yeah. They weren't sure whether the, that they were only filling, the contracts were only filling 40% of the pipe. That was the, was that, do you recall that?
Mm-hmm.
Only 40%.
Yeah, but that's today.
Yeah.
From my perspective, I think I'm a little bit with Steve here, is if they can prove a need, right, and whatever, then the, the issue for, for us, our impact is, you know, is, is there a better way of lessening the total impact on the town and its, its residents, period?
Well, I think, I think a lot of the feeling is, is that Kinder Morgan is bulldozing its way through the process. And, and by doing that, they're showing no flexibility in, in the routing, you know. I think we spoke about, why don't they just put it down 93, way back when we mentioned that, well, they can't do that because the federal government wouldn't let them do it. Well, wait a minute.
The federal government's got to let them do whatever, what they want to do now.
Right, right. So, so, you know, you get into that argument, so, so, so when you look at battle lines being drawn, it's like, you kind of know that things are stacked against you, so people make a stand to, to be against the pipeline and do whatever they can legally to oppose it. And I, I think that's, that's where the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition is.
What I find perplexing a little bit is, and this has got nothing to do whether we need it or not, but the route that they've picked, right, and some of the parameters that I've heard, but nobody has, and maybe this has got to do with allowing people on a survey property, I don't know, is where is it going to be with respect to everybody's individual property? Is it on an existing easement, or does the easement have to be increased? What's the total impact of it? Does it cut across my swimming pool? Does it go through specific wetlands? I know that's why they want to look at a couple of places, I guess. It just seems to me that, that comes afterward. The project gets improved, and then they get into the detail, and then you know what the impact is going to be. Michael?
I'm not sure I did it. Let me see that article that, or the, the interview with Senator Warren, or her position on the gas pipe.
No, I did not.
I'll email everybody the article, but she's clearly against it, and she, you know, one of the quotes she made at that interview was that every, the federal government needs to get behind the people that are impacted by this, and that includes FERC. So she calls them out. I think we should take advantage of that and try to continue to contact her office and try to get more information that she has, and try to get more support from her office for us locally, because I'm not impressed with what's come out of Congressman Maltin's office. I just don't think we're getting the support we need, but she clearly is aggravated and motivated to support, I think, the tone of what we're trying to take on this, on our position on this. So I just leave that, I'll email you all the article, and you can read it, it's a lot of great information.
What paper was that in?
It's in the GazetteNet.
Okay, okay. That'd be great, I'd like to see that, thank you. I mean, they have, they have reached out to Senator Warren and Markey, and we haven't had really much feedback, you know, except for public comments, perhaps.
Well, there was a big issue with respect to the state and wetlands, right, and wasn't there some law that they...
Yeah, well, Article 97, I think you're referring to.
Right. So the legislature, what did that end up?
I haven't heard a thing, and that's, it's interesting, it wasn't even brought up in our last conversation, so it seems to be a dead issue at the moment.
I think, I think they're trying to get all the other ducks in the line before they go to the legislature, say, okay, you're the only impediment now, you know, what are you going to do?
Should be. Okay, well, this is good information, and I think we should, I think as Steve suggested, we should get a notice out, even though they're going to get a notice.
Well, they should get a notice.
Yeah, right.
Right, right, for that suggestion.
Okay, so we have, next item on our agenda, it says, review 2017 revenue and expenditure projections. I'm not quite ready to do that, but I think we ought to at least have a discussion of the forthcoming budget meetings.
Certainly, certainly. So there are a series of budget hearings that have been set, the first of which will be this Saturday, February 27, beginning at 8 o'clock in the morning here in Room 14, and that'll be the Police and Fire Department budget presentations to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And then on...
What order?
I have to confirm.
Who's bringing the muffins? They get first up.
There will be some light breakfast that will be here. I'd have to confirm, Selectmen, I'm sorry, I don't know which one's first. I believe that the Fire Department's going first, but I...
That's all right.
Then the second budget meeting for, it'll be the first of two for the smaller budgets, will be on Monday, March 7. There'll also be a budget meeting for the smaller budgets on Monday, March 28, and the DPW budget will be presented on Thursday, March 24.
Is that confirmed now?
It is confirmed, yes. What time is it, I believe? I believe it's going to be at 6 o'clock, but it could be at 7. I would plan for two hours.
Well, I mean, first, we have to make sure everyone can meet the meeting, make the meeting.
I believe we circulated and confirmed availability from everybody for each of those dates.
And it's going to be at 6, right, or 7?
Why don't we plan for 7 o'clock p.m.?
7 o'clock.
And I'll notify the department, that way. So the dates again are February 27, which is Saturday, March 7, a Monday, Thursday, March 24 at 7:00 p.m.
So what's different?
And Monday, March 28.
What's different this year is we're not doing the DPW on the Saturday.
Right.
And therefore, going to do it on a separate night.
The other thing that I will note is that, as I mentioned in my cover letter with the departmental recommendations, those recommendations reflect town administrators, in consultation with the Finance Director, and after reviewing each budget request, those recommendations are for expenditure recommendations. The work of the financial planning team will continue in the coming weeks to reconcile the requests to the available revenues for fiscal year 2017.
Any questions from the board members regarding the budget process?
Again, the Monday night of 28, you're planning on...
Again, it would be, we expect that that'll be the smaller departmental budgets and a regular Selectmen's meeting, and that would be in place of Monday, March 21.
So there's no March 21 meeting anymore?
That's correct.
Any questions, anybody? Any issues with those dates? Okay. Town administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, bear with me just one moment. Mostly so that I don't forget to say this, as the board is aware, we had a deadline scheduled today at 1 o'clock p.m. for proposals associated with the JT Berry property. This would have been for commercial broker and marketing services. The good news is we had some six or seven firms take the RFP out. Unfortunately, the response towards the middle of the day today was not to the extent that we had hoped, and we did get some very late interest today, so in consultation with the town planner, we've extended the deadline for submissions to Friday at 12 o'clock noon. We hope that we'll be able to generate additional responses. We did receive some responses, so that, that is good news, but we hope to receive some more. And so to the regular report, which I filed here...
So when, when will those bids be open?
Their proposals are due by 12 o'clock noon this Friday.
Okay.
They get reviewed by the, it'll be reviewed by the Economic Development Committee. The non-price proposals will be reviewed, and they'll determine the most qualified...
On one of their scheduled meetings?
Yeah, I believe next Wednesday evening, or Thursday evening, I'm not sure.
We moved it to Thursday.
Thursday.
We have a majority of the people can make it.
Okay, great. So the next Thursday evening...
So they're going to review it on the merits?
Correct. And then after that, after the most qualified respondent is identified, we open the envelopes for... for price proposals and there's an opportunity to reconcile for a contract.
We created a valuation criteria, which we're gonna follow and, and score according to what was bid.
Great.
It's a pretty detailed matrix that the committee put together. So to the regular report, the North Reading Police Department received a one point five percent share of a money seizure that took place in July of 2013. The seizure was a result of large investigation that included state, federal, and local agencies. The U.S. Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture Program provides guidance on how the forfeited money can be utilized. The seized money will be used to support law enforcement training, equipment, and law enforcement operations. Secondly, there's been much discussion of issues of safety and preparedness in public buildings and schools in recent months. As the towns aware, the Police Department has been working actively in conjunction with the North Reading Public Schools to update safety protocols. The Police Department will be conducting critical incident training here at the Town Hall on Wednesday afternoon, March sixteenth. To maximize the effectiveness of this training, the Town Hall will close at twelve o'clock noon on that day, Wednesday, March sixteenth, and advance notices will be circulated amongst the community in the coming, coming days. We appreciate the community's understanding and flexibility.
Can I just make a comment about the school, the security of the school at this time? Just real quick. Cause I've had a few people in the community ask me, saying, you know, we really didn't hear a lot about our new school and the security, do we even have any at all? And what they don't know is that during the building, as we were designing that building and doing the installation phase of it, those portions of the discussions were held in executive session. We don't wanna release to the public the detailed security measures that we've, that this town has invested in that building, so I just wanna make people aware that there is a significant amount, there was a significant amount of work and design and investment into our school buildings for security. Our kids are safe, especially that brand-new building, there's a lot in there, but that's all I'll be, I'll leave it at that. But I think it's important, and I don't know, Steve, if you wanna add any more from our school building, building projects...
You're not giving away the secrets then, are you? No, you're right.
But, but I think the public has a right to know.
People should feel comfortable.
They should feel comfortable. But all, there was a lot of work, and it's all done in executive session, so don't think we didn't think about it.
Yes, Mike?
For the board's information, I attached a listing of properties that were fined for noncompliance with the town's sidewalk snow removal bylaw. And this is forwarded to me by the Police Department. I wanna recognize Chief Murphy and Community Services Sergeant Derek Howe for their efforts in enforcing the bylaw during the spat of snow that occurred towards the beginning and middle part of the month of February. That's quite a bit of effort they went in, that I know the board has been well aware of. And fortunately, as a result of that effort, we were able to see quite a bit of compliance, but there were some instances of noncompliance which resulted in the fines being issued. I note there was one property that was issued a fine that we determined was issued a fine incorrectly, and we resolved that matter with that property owner.
Jeffrey?
If, if I may, um, I saw the list and, and I don't wanna have any discussion on it, but I, I do wish to say, I think twenty-eight Main Street needs to be addressed. All right, they weren't on the list, and, at least I didn't see them, but that needs to be addressed, and I'll leave it at that, cause I don't wanna have any further discussion on that unless I can talk to them one-on-one.
Jeff, I, I can speak up a little bit?
I'm sorry. That twenty-eight Main Street needs to be addressed. They, they do not do their sidewalk, they haven't done their sidewalk, and I've had brief conversation with the town administrator on that, but I, but I think we need to address that. I'll just leave it at that for the moment.
I'd be happy to follow.
Thank you.
Just continuing with my regular report. For the information of the public, an assessing consultant will be measuring and inspecting the town's real estate building data for the revaluation and for building permits that were issued in fiscal year 2015. The public's cooperation is appreciated. For more information, please visit the North Reading website at northreadingma.gov, or feel free to contact the assessor's office at nine seven eight three five seven five two two one. And I know that there was also an article in the transcript as well last week notifying folks, so we're just gonna keep that on people's radar, that they may be contacted by this, this firm. The town's home rule petition relative to land in Eisenhower Pond Park, which was approved at the October 2015 town meeting, has been approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. I'd like to thank Representative Jones for his efforts to move this legislation along and for advocating for our interests along the way as the bill was modified in the House and the Senate.
This is for the director of buddies, who have the...
That's correct, yes.
So, at what point in time can we, um, can they petition us to make it available?
So we've had a, I've had a preliminary discussion with the budding property owner and it's a subject for discussion in executive sessions.
Great.
Uh, the board and I received correspondence from Mr. James Kirin relative to water usage during the demolition of the old high school. A copy of the response that I sent to Ms. Kirin is attached in the report for the board's information. I just also wanna note, I appreciate Ms. Kirin's patience with our responding, it took quite some time for us to get an answer back to him, but he was very patient through the process, so thank you for that.
Is, the project paid for the water?
Uh, the way the contracts were drawn up, my understanding is that it was Gil Bane responsible for...
Gil Bane?
The water, or the demolition contractor was responsible for the, the town did not provide the water at no cost, so we followed the protocol for issuing a hydrant meter, and the water was billed at the standard water, tiered water rate. As some of the board members are aware, Selectman Musseri and Prisco and I attended a preliminary meeting with the major state agency stakeholders who will review the town's draft environmental impact report for water and wastewater. Uh, that meeting was held on February second. The meeting was productive and provided us an opportunity to receive informal feedback from the involved agencies. The DEIR itself will be filed on Monday, February twenty-ninth. To continue to inform the public, we will be hosting water and wastewater information sessions on March sixteenth at seven o'clock PM and May eleventh at seven o'clock PM. Our water customers will receive notice in the next bill that these workshops have been scheduled. And finally, as you may know, Nerissa officially disbanded last year, and I would try to start saying what it stands for, but unfortunately, I don't know all of the, what all of the letters stand for, but it was an active youth organization, as I think many in the community are know. They donated the balance of their funds to the Department of Youth Services, proceeds of which amounted to nine thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. They were deposited into the Youth Services gift account, and they're restricted for use as follows: to support the new program Reality Fair this year and going forward as needed, to support the new program for child abuse prevention, and provide one-time funding for the curriculum, and to provide substance abuse education and programs run by North Reading Youth Services. Nerissa was founded in October of two thousand and six by a ground of volunteers, by a group of volunteers who contributed funds and volunteered hours for the past ten years. They initiated programs such as the Middle School Youth Group, Battle of the Bands, and more, which continue to this day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I guess my, my comment is, uh, they, it was a, you know, well-organized, energetic group that got the board going forward with Youth Services and, you know, followed through, and, uh, the sad part about them disbanding is that we've had one, two, three Youth Services Directors, and each one did a phenomenal job, and it seems like each time we replace one, they get better.
Very fortunate.
I mean, it's just, you know, I, I think it's just totally phenomenal. I'm sure that, uh, internal, uh, administration was involved, but they're the ones that did the interviewing and, you know, locating and finding somebody, and, uh, being on the CIT, I've got to work with all three of them, and, uh, all I can say is they did a phenomenal job. We've got good people working for us. Their presence will be missed, hopefully.
Do we have a, they're, they're a party to, what, they were appointed, they became a standing committee, didn't they?
Correct, yeah.
So, how, how did they dis, disband?
The committee still exists.
The committee still exists.
The Youth Services Committee still exists. This is a separate organization, apparently had its own accounting...
All right, so we, we have representatives from Nerissa...
Right.
On Youth Services, okay. Get it mixed up. All right. Right. But just in relation to Nerissa too, I mean, get, they, they spearheaded the, the effort again to get a Youth Services Director and, and they built that program, and I was a, a reluctant individual, not that I didn't embrace what they were trying to do, but as far as, you know, spending the resources and coming up with a new position and...
Yeah, it was a split decision.
Yeah, kind of a split decision on it, but, uh, I'm, I'm not unhappy I was on the losing side of it, because it's been a tremendous benefit, and, and I don't always claim to be on the right side of the issues, and that one there, I'm a happy loser. Again, Youth Services Directors that we've had in the past, as the chairman has said, have been phenomenal and provided a vital link within the community for the youth, and I think it's a wonderful program, so. And we thank them all for their efforts, and again, a lot of effort, a lot of hours. I thank them very much.
Jeffrey, you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I wasn't on the board at that time, but they, they came forward at a time that was very important, and, um, they really helped Youth Services, uh, get off the ground and, and, uh, do really good things. And with regard to the, the directors that they've had, uh, I, I would say that one was just as good as the other, all the time, and they were all very, very good, so, um, they all added, they all added a signature.
Michael, I would suggest that if, well, we could get a list of the committee members, those that just resigned in the, in the past, put a letter together that I could sign, give them the board permission, thanking them for their service, we could, minimum do that.
I think the important part is, is that, you know, they, they promised to fund that position, you know, for a period of time, and...
Right.
They kept their promise and, and did it and assisted in helping the position prove its worth, and the town picked it up going forward, so it was, they had, they were driven and they succeeded.
Anything else, Michael?
No.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Well said, thank you.
Mr. Yul?
Okay. Yeah, two things. Number one, on the, uh, TA's report on the revenue that was received by our Police Department, that doesn't, we, the board of selectmen have no, no connection to that. That's directly under the Police Department's responsibility, correct? I mean, they have to, they have certain criteria that they have to meet with the, um, federal government?
That's correct. The funding is required to be expanded under the parameters of the United States Department of Justice, and it's, uh, unique in that it does not require appropriation, doesn't go through town meeting, doesn't require a recommendation of the Selectmen to be expanded, so you know, you're correct.
Right, so I, I think it's important for people to know, to know that, that, um, we have no influence really over the, the funds that, that, that they're gonna use at the benefit of, of their department, so I think that's important for the public to know. Also, um, last week, I believe, um, I keep, let me preface my point. I, I, you know, we come up to the budget season this year, uh, this Saturday, and, uh, you know, as I keep looking at the numbers and I think about how much everything costs and how expensive it is, I, you know, we never seem to find, we always find ways to make it work, but we never are able to find ways to reduce our costs. It's, it's, it's really very, very hard, through, you know, through all of our efforts, and, and I was reading the other day where West Virginia became the twenty-sixth state of the Union, to become a right-to-work state. And when I look at that, and I, I think about all those states, and, and the primary reason they're doing it is to cut their costs. And, um, it's good to see that the majority of the, the, um, of our, of the United States is, is in that direction, because that's the only way that, that State of Massachusetts, if it doesn't get the revenues that it needs, they need to be able to cut, cut their costs. Now, I often think that when I sit here, how can I save those within the community, those who we represent? How can we reduce their taxes? And I'm always befuddled by it, and I would think that if the boards of selectmen of towns throughout the state would begin to pressure our state officials to say, you need to help us reduce our costs. And one of the only ways to do that, it seems, is to, uh, address the issue of be, becoming a right, a right-to-work state, because everybody should have the right to work. And, um, I don't know what the feelings are, members of the board, I'm sure every member of the board feels that reducing our costs is a good thing. I don't know how the board would feel about pressuring our state officials to help us in that regard, and hooking on to...
Keep in mind that, I mean, I, I, you were at the MMA meeting, you listened to the governor, he talked about the WeWhack-a-Bill, which is now, got some other name. There's been word to, uh, spread around to get our legislators to put it all back in one board, uh, one bill before, you remember they split it, went to committees, put it back in one bill to get it approved. I was just thinking about some of the things that he talked about in the bill, or that are in the bill, associated with the impact on the communities. And, you know, he and, and Spolio, being ex-selectmen from communities unlike ours, you know, have come forth and said, these are the things that, you know, we said and means, just like we're talking now, that have been, you know, thought on our sides associated with added costs, you know, whether it's not necessarily a total unfunded mandate, but some rule or something that you gotta jump to to get something done, and, uh, and the proposal, there's a substantial number of items like that that he's taken away. And then we have the Community Compact, which you have signed up for, aimed at best practices that could lead to, uh, cost savings, but, you know, labor is a big factor in the town operation, and specifically the school, where eighty-eight percent, I think, of the school budget is salaries, and those are the budget drivers.
I don't necessarily agree that it's a right-to-work issue as far as right-to-work states, you know, basically union busting in relation to, you know, balancing the budget and cutting costs necessarily. We just endorsed a, a proposal, a resolution here this evening that would significantly have a positive impact on our community if the state would fund the mandates that they put on us regardless. And again, as far as the, uh, the right-to-work state, we negotiate through collective bargaining in good faith and come to agreements and, and fund every year. It's just a question of, you know, what level of services can we afford to maintain, you know, and maintain the tax bills as they currently are, you know? Costs escalate and go up, and it's, uh, you know, what we can do is try and contain those costs, think of other ways of doing business, delivering those services that the public demands here in North Reading, but balancing it on the backs of the employees is not necessarily to be the way to do it. To me, there are other things, like this resolution we passed tonight that is significant, where I think our legislature has failed us considerably. Just look at the independent study that was done, the resolution we proposed this evening. But I appreciate your input.
Jeff, what else?
That's it.
Catherine?
I just wanna make a brief comment about Michael's announcement, and I, I mean, I respect your decision, Michael. This is one time I disagree with your decision.
It's okay.
But I'm the newer, newest member, and, um, I've really enjoyed working with you, and I know you're extremely devoted to all of the goals of the board. Everybody's quite different in terms of their approach and their personality or their analysis of issues, but it seems like everybody's working towards the same goals, and I know you wrestle with that decision, and I know we will see you in other capacities because you're devoted to the community. But I agreed with the speaker and hope, maybe you might reconsider. I know you don't wanna talk about it, but, um, but, uh, you've actually too been a big help to me personally as I step into this capacity and this role, and, um, I appreciate all the help you're giving me and, and learning my function here too.
I'd like to help you too, as we go into the budget seasons, doing these budgets for the first time.
the first time, it's not easy, so any help I can offer.
Anything else, Catherine?
Yeah, one of the fun things coming up, as it does every year, our annual Park and Rec puts on the annual Spring Wine and Food Social, which is a good sign. That means spring is pretty close. It's going to be on April Fool's Day, right, Rita? I don't know if you want to add anything to what I say, but Friday, April Fool's Day. Maybe one of the first functions that Teresa's at Hillview, right? Probably.
So, great opportunity for the public to come out and see the different facility, I'll call it. I'm not sure if it's been renovated or what they're doing in there, but knowing Mr. Yebber, I'm sure there's been some nice investment done inside that building, and I'm looking forward to seeing it and actually participating in a function in his new facility. So, it is on, like I said, April 1st, 7 to 10. Tickets on sale at the Park and Rec office, or you can always call Rita and she handles them to your house, so.
It's a great time.
And they're always looking for any assistance they can get. Remember, the reason they put this event on is so they can make, continue to make investments in the community, at our parks and in our recreation, so for the children of this town. It's $2.40 tickets, but if you have an opportunity to donate Bruins tickets or any kind of ticket for a show or whatever it may be, they'd be more than happy to accept those donations. So, I will be there, and I look forward to it. I sort of have a morbid request, and I'm looking for some help on this because I've had a family member in town that just lost his spouse, and he had asked me why the town cannot have our obituaries on our public access channels, just sort of scrolling because not everybody gets the transcript. Not everybody hears, and I've thought about it for a second. I said, you know, he's probably right. I mean, a lot of people do watch their public access channels, and they watch what scrolls by. I'm not sure what the process can be. Maybe NORCAM could take the action or maybe in your meetings.
Liaison.
But I think it would be great if we, you know what? I think he has a really good idea because he felt that...
Is it done anywhere else, Michael?
Just in the transcript, I think is the only location we have posted.
No, no. I mean, do you know of any other communities that do it on Cable Line Test?
I don't know, Bob, because I never looked.
Okay.
I will be honest. And Mr. Trow's shaking his head no, so I think he's probably a great source. But it may not be a bad idea if we have a pay, one of the channels we can, you know, just post it every once in a while as we have people pass along in North Reading. Just helps get the word out so these people can have a nice tribute for their family members that they pass. Just pass that along, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Michael, I'm sad that you've come to this conclusion, and I know I've been part of your decision. I wish you well, and I will completely support you on continuing the efforts that you've put in on the economic development. I think that is a critical path of the town's future, and I know you've been very passionate about it, and you want to see it through.
I do.
And I still wish it would stay on, the entire board, and continue with our whole mission that we've been moving forward. I respect your decision. I think that, you know, we're going to, we're going to begin the budget process, and, you know, from there, we're going to be moving quite rapidly into getting ready for town meeting with the challenges that we have. So, in preparation for it, the school budget, preliminary school budget's been posted on Dropbox. Is that correct, Michael, or not?
No, I don't believe so. I don't believe it's been released yet.
Can we get that done?
I believe it's going to be released the first week of March.
Yeah, they haven't released it yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't believe it's been released yet.
All right. So, there's just a preliminary budget that was handed out.
At the financial plan, yeah, that was.
Okay, all right. So, that will be in Dropbox. If you don't want to carry the budget book around, you can always quickly look in Dropbox to take a look at the budget. If you feel comfortable with carrying it around or leaving it here and just using it during the budget session, to use the iPad for studying the budget, you can do that too. So, I think if you ask Michael to, like I have, to keep it in the other room until a budget hearing, because I typically will use the iPad for that. Like Michael said, the April 1st fundraiser has always been a great event, and it's one of the big fundraisers for our recreation department. They do a super job, and I've attended, I count the glasses, you know, the wine glass. My wife would always take them home, so the cabinet is pretty full. And the food has always been great. And then there's, you know, the overall camaraderie with friends, so I would encourage everybody to go. NORCAM had asked me to just make notes to the public that, you know, they offer a number of programs for youth, and I believe that they published that. Is that published on the channel itself?
Yeah, classes, and we post on our Facebook page all the time too. So, if you look at the bulletin board that Mr. Prisco was talking about earlier, you'll find ads for classes and just lessons. Give our number of classes.
And the website is norcam.org.
Correct.
Phil, you want to use the mic? Dog.
So, I would encourage, you know, those that are interested, contact NORCAM. If you're looking for something to do, if you wanted to put together perhaps for a wedding event or a milestone birthday, take your pictures and put them into some kind of a video presentation, PowerPoint presentation or something, and go over to NORCAM and they'll help you with it. Jeffrey?
Yeah. If, ever since I've been involved with NORCAM going back a few years, I mean, they're really a diamond in the rough for the youth in the community. I mean, it's a safe environment, it's a good environment. What they can learn there is something they can take with them. I know some have gone to college based on what they've learned at NORCAM. So, they have experts there that can teach them videography and editing and many other things related to that industry. So, parents, take advantage of it. It's really a jewel.
And with that, I will ask for a motion to proceed back into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining. Anything else, Michael?
So, moved?
Litigation strategy.
Litigation.
And a real estate, right.
Don't do that.
Same motion of the first one. The first part of the packet, back of the packet now.
Yeah, that was already signed, right?
During the executive session, for the sole purpose of adjourning.
Second.
I'll wait for the motion.
For the, Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation strategy, collective bargaining. Such discussion in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town. That's it, right?
And for return to regular session for the sole purpose of...
Adjourning.
Adjourning.
The meeting.
Second.
Second, Mr. Yule?
Sorry.
I'll have a roll call vote. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Yule?
Aye.
Mr. Manelli?
Aye.
Mr. Prisco? Guess we need four or five minutes.